Welcome to WILN-TV 35's Hazelton City Council Forum. Three Democrats and three Republicans are seeking their respective party nominations for two open council seats. The Democrats are Jack Mundie, Jean Mop, Nikarol Soto, and the Republicans are Pete Andrasco, Lauren Sacco, and Victor Acevedo. Questions will be asked by myself this evening as well as WILN-TV 35's news director Gary Purna. Gary, nice to see you.
Back again, our final live debate/Forum of the primary election cycle, so excited to see it.
Absolutely, very excited to see it, and I should also tell everybody watching that we also have a "Meet the Candidates" special that will be airing on May 16th. Check out our Facebook page for air times on that, as well as rebroadcast times for this evening's forum. With that said, we're going to start with one-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. We're just going to go straight down the line. We will start with Jack Mundie.
Hello, thank you Tiffany and Gary for having us here. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Hazelton for the past 25 years. In those years, I am proud of the fact that I voted against major tax increases and outrageous fees brought about by a few of the mayors that I was served with. One of the outrageous fees was the stormwater fee, which I voted against, and when we had the majority in council, we eliminated that fee, and that was a burden on our taxpayers. I want to bring back to council a voice of common sense, and in the last 16 years, we've passed balanced budgets that if the mayors would have followed them, we would have no problem. Some of the mayors chose not to follow them. When a mayor had a good idea, we were all on board, and some of the ideas, the major tax increases, one mayor one year had wanted increased taxes 86%, and I said you would chase everyone out of the city, so...and they got that down to 56%, which I voted against.
Okay, Jean.
Hi, I'm Jean Mop, and thank you for having us all here tonight, Gary and Tiffany and WILN. We appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you and to the public and to give you our opinions and our voices of what we think should be done with the city. I was born and raised in Hazelton, I raised my family in Hazelton, and I'm proud to be a resident of Hazelton. What I bring to council from being on for the last eight years is experience. When you're a council member, there's a lot of work that's involved that most people don't realize what we actually do. We have to prepare for when we have an agenda, and that means we have to do documentation and research and find out what exactly is needed in information so that we can make accurate and the best vote that we possibly can, which will serve the public and serve the city. We do our very best, we do a lot of work, and we answer a lot of phone calls from constituents. Thank you.
Nikarol.
Well, good evening, everyone. Firstly, I would like to thank WILN for the invitation to speak here tonight. My name is Nikarol Soto, and I've been living and working in the city of Hazelton since I was a teenager. I have seen the best of our city, and I've seen what it has become. I believe my first, my almost priority would be to giving our police and our city officials the best resources they need to do the best of their jobs. I would do this despite who the mayor is. I believe that my job as a city councilwoman would be to serve you as a legislator in the city. My first priority would be to work with the administration to introduce ordinances and resolutions to empower our local businesses through community grants, coenforcement, and personal conversation. Specifically, I would like to work with the Hispanic businesses to make sure that they are up to go and make them productive citizens and business for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pete.
I'm Pete Andrasco, and I want to thank WILN for the opportunity, and I'm a lifelong resident of Hazelton. Actually, I'm a lifelong resident of Cyber Street. I lived there my whole life, believe it or not, and I have...my wife is Paula, I have two kids, I have two...Megan is my daughter, PJ is my son, I have four stepsons, so I have a lot of votes there. But I think with the city, we have to clean it up. Driving through the city, it's just not Hazelton anymore, and I think we have to get a team of coenforcement people, we have to get a team just like us. We have to work, if any of us are lucky to win, you have to work as a team. You can't sit there and put down the mayor, put down the council.
I'm Lauren Sacco. I am married to a gentleman named Dr. Scott Sacco. We are both lifelong residents, born and raised here in the Hazelton area. I come from a world of small family business. I have not grown up in the political background, so I am new to this whole game. What I look to bring forward to the city of Hazelton is my knowledge and my working alongside both my family and my employees to bring good things to the city. There is a lot of things that I see a little bit backwards, but I also do choose to see the good in the community. I am looking to work hand-in-hand with the current administration. I like where I see things going, and I like where I see things are headed, so I'm looking to step in and help create ordinances and pass different resolutions to help get the city more on track and to help move forward. Thank you.
Okay, and Victor.
Hi, Hazelton. My name is Victor Acevedo. I'm running for office of council to be a fresh voice for all people living in Hazelton, at the same time, work together with the community. I do not believe in selling and getting rid of any playgrounds, but support improvement and adding more for our young people to do. This is the way that they may not get into grants or troubles. I want to work with the mayor, whoever the mayor wins, and the council too, to follow Act 47 recovery plan and help move the city forward and out of Act 47. At the same time, I know there are a lot of problems in Hazelton. I live in the city, not for that many years, but like six years here. I see that we got problems with the roads and the garbage.
Okay, sorry, the time's up, Victor. Thank you, thank you. But we're going to be hearing from all of you quite a bit this evening, which we're looking forward to. In fact, the first question is going to go from Gary first to Lauren. Lauren, you'll have a minute to respond to this.
Lauren, do you believe that the city of Hazelton should have been put into Act 47, or you think we could have done without it?
I support Act 47 from a residential standpoint and from a business standpoint. This has been the first time moving in to this current year that we have gone into with carrying no balance from the year before. I like where I see it's headed. We do have four more years of it. It creates balance, it creates stability, and I think it's the way of a good future to set us up on the right foot to move forward.
Okay, the same question to Victor.
I believe that Act 47 provide order to move forward with the city. At the same time, we need to find out the way to get out of Act 47, and the city need to get their own budget to move forward. At the same time, I believe the...all the employees of the city, they don't have to...the city, I mean, move, leave for page by check, check by check. We need like a fund to move forward.
Okay, and the same question goes to Pete.
I definitely agree with Act 47. I think it's good that we're starting at zero and hopefully look forward to the opportunity to come up with ideas with whoever the mayor is, whoever the council is, to get us out of Act 47 and in the right direction. We have to...it's 2019, you know, we gotta move forward, we gotta move forward, we gotta leave this old stuff behind, you know, the old whatever, you know, don't raise taxes, don't raise taxes. We gotta come up with ideas, you know, and if you don't do anything, well, then we're gonna have to raise taxes again. Nobody wants to raise taxes. I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes here. You wouldn't be running if you did. But if we don't come up with ideas, and I think I have some ideas, we'll see, you know.
Okay, we'll talk about that a little bit further down the road. Next question is going to be from myself to the Democrats, starting with Jean. Jean, you acknowledge that you have served in past, and you say with that comes experience. But some might argue that you were around as Hazelton fell deeper into distress status. So that said, why should the public feel confident that former members of council such as yourself can come in with fresh thinking, or is it time for a political newcomer?
Well, that's a very good question, and I did say I have experience, which is an advantage over newcomers. They don't know where to go to seek the information, which departments, they're not familiar with all of the third-class city code or optional plan, and we have two plans we have to follow, A and B, the taxing codes. There's a lot involved when you're on city council. The city was in distress, and I believe more so because of the spending that went on, and it would be with a lot of the departments. They had a purchasing order in place years ago, but it fell to the wayside, and because of that, even the administrators struggled trying to find and keep a handle on our city finances. So now that it's being reenacted under Act 47, and it's been put into place, and it seems to be working quite nicely now, we'll be able to have more control on the spending and so that it doesn't get out of hand like it has in the past.
Okay, same question to Jack.
Well, I think experience means a lot, especially in situations where you have the city coming back. I know there's some people in Hazelton have said that you were on council and the city, you know, went into distress. I voted with Bobby Gavio to try and do an early intervention to avoid Act 47 where you wouldn't be under so many mandates by Act 47. One of the reasons why we went into Act 47 is the last budget that we passed, the mayor did not want to sell our delinquent taxes that we had done every year for the last four or five years, and who passed, administrators have always recommended that. That left an 800,000 hole in our budget, and it was a disagreement that the mayor had with council, and that was one of the reasons why we were in that financial distress. Now, to the mayor's credit, he wanted to borrow, not borrow, get a tax-free loan of $1 million from Act 47, which I think helped the city.
Okay, next, same question to Nikarol.
Well, this is my second time running for council and never being on council, but there is a lot of information out there, and even that would substitute the lack of experience. Before taking any decision on any resolution or on any ordinances, we would do best research just to substitute the lack of experience, and then we would do a good decision based on facts before, you know, taking any decision, passing any ordinances. I believe that there is a lot of resources that we can go to before taking any decisions, so just being on council and having the experience do not prevent me from being on council or taking wise decision for the residents of the city. Thank you.
Okay, next question will be from Gary to Victor.
Victor, if the next mayor that is elected is from your political party, would you be a rubber stamp for them, or would you be your own person on council?
Well, I would work with the mayor. That's the first thing, and all the council for the best of the community and the best for the...any...anything that would be better for the people of Hazelton. At the same time, I'd be working with the mayor for any resolution that we can do for the best of our people. It's important because I know there's so many people as experienced as a council, they got political background. I don't have, I have a little bit of political background, but it's not in the city, it's another stuff. But I think that we need fresh, fresh people to work with the mayor and listen, and listen the community needs.
Okay, same question to Lauren.
I believe this question's a little bit two-folded, because the more I look into how city council operates and just taking a step back and looking at different things, I think there's two distinct roles that have to take place. Council is there to create legislature, where the mayor is there to administer it. So if everybody starts to stay in their lane a little bit more and support each side, I think you would see a big difference in what we would be doing moving forward.
Okay, and Pete as well.
Yes, I would never be a rubber stamp for the mayor. I have my own mind, and...but I do want to work with whoever becomes mayor and whoever becomes council. Like Lauren said, we have to step back, and as a council, we have to work together to present it to whoever the mayor may be, and hopefully, he will listen to us, and we'll be able to come up with a solution, instead of just, this is the way it's gonna be. And I think that's the way it's gotta work. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. This question will go first to Nikarol. Our city is about half Hispanic, yet we do not, as of yet, have a city government that reflects that. Is it time for this, or is cultural background irrelevant to being elected to office?
I believe that, you know, there is a demand and there is a need. Like you stated, half of our population is half Hispanic, so I believe that we need someone on council who knows the culture, who knows the mindset of both populations. I mean, I am Hispanic, and also I've been, I am a young professional educated by Anglo, so I know both mindset, and I think that would be a great asset to our council, to our city council.
Okay, and same question to Jack, and if you'd like to also just add how you would go about reaching out to the Hispanic population?
I think it's important to reach out to Hispanic population, they're a big part of our city. They came here for the same reasons our grandparents came here. While on council, I was on the first council board that hired the first Hispanic to a board, Dr. Lopez, Dr. Acapito Lopez, to the Hazelton City Authority. I think since then, when I was on council, we did hire a few more. We hired the publisher of the newspaper, who's the publisher of...
Milcar.
Milcar Araro, I think we put him on one of the boards, I think the housing board. So I think it's important to reach out. We've hired many in my last two terms on council, we've hired quite a few Hispanic police officers that are terrific, they're doing a great job. I think it's important to reach out to them. They're opening businesses, and they're helping the city to...they're bringing back the city, reviving downtown, opening businesses, and I think we have to keep an open lines of communication with them, and I'm, like I said, we were the first ones to put one on the board, Hispanic.
Okay, and Jean.
It's important that we incorporate everybody and treat everybody equally in the city. As Jackie said, wings, including the Hispanic community, they learn how our city operates, they learn what ordinances are being put in place, new ordinances, and what ones are being amended. It's the future of our city and the concern of our residents. I get phone calls, which I had said in my opening, from constituents that can't reach out and are able to talk to anybody in the city administration, so they call us, and it doesn't matter if they're Hispanic, if they're Indian, it doesn't matter if they're Caucasian. I help them, I get their answers for them, I go out and help and work for the people. Thank you.
Okay, Gary to Pete.
Pete, do you think citizens can serve on a board or a commission?
Absolutely. I believe that, and I have a lot of experience with this because I worked at the Water Authority for 43 years, and I was in the water quality field for all those years, and to put people on the board just because you know them does not help that Water Authority or that sewer authority. It doesn't help. You need to...I think they're in the right direction now because they're taking applications and listening, and I believe that's the only way you're gonna actually get a...I mean, I could go deeper because, you know, I was a management there for 32 years, so, and I see things, I have a record book this long that I could, you know, tell you things that in the paper, you read the paper.
Question for me one more time, please.
So, the question was, do you think city councils should be more willing to interview candidates for boards and commissions, and would you support putting limits on the amount of time people serve on those boards and commissions? Now, right now, my understanding is I believe they're four-year terms.
Four years.
But sometimes people are reappointed. Do you think there needs to be a limit with that?
Yes and no. I'm a little torn on that, I'll be very honest with you. At the same time, evolve or die is also a mindset that I kind of take on that, and I don't see that there'd be a problem having someone that has the experience in there, but also flip the coin and there's someone with a fresh set of eyes. That's a little more up-to-date and modern with the four years moving forward. So I think four years is a good, that's a good number.
And Victor.
Yes, I'm agree with Lauren. I think there's four years, and there's...I mean, I cannot promise anybody anything, but others that will listen and be your voice, not a puppet. To any group, do my best to move the city forward, but at the same time, we need people with little experience, we need people with little experience, but I think that anybody can afford the job for the positions.
Okay. Jack, you noted in your open that you've stood in past against taxes and imposing fees. Are there circumstances in which you could see a need to raise taxes upon or impose fees upon the residents of the city? Or perhaps suggest that they vote as to whether they would like something imposed?
Well, maybe you're talking about the stormwater fee, which they're talking about bringing back, which I'm totally against, and I'll fight it tooth and nail. These are unfunded mandates that come from the state, and if we keep getting them, then we have to change our people who represent us. They're putting these mandates thus, and the people can't afford them. Up in Wicksborough, they're charging people, I think it was between $250 and $300. I read in the Wicksborough Times Leader where half of the people paid the fee and half didn't, and they're thinking about fighting it, taking it to court. You know, I know there's a time when you have to raise taxes, but as far as the income tax, I voted to raise taxes my last term in office, and we could not raise the income tax. You know, the property taxes, which are a burden on our senior citizens, we have to be careful with that. I do think they should eliminate property taxes, the legislature is working on that. That would be something that, you know, I'm sure if they eliminated that, they'd help the states would help the city with some funding.
Okay, Jean, same question. Are you...are there any circumstances in which you could see a need to raise taxes or impose fees upon the residents of the city?
It depends on the circumstances of the city and what we have to follow with Act 47's plan. In the past, in 2016, they tried to raise the EIT tax. I was against it, and the reason I was against it is because we were at our maximum. At the meeting before on council, it was brought up that the word should be taken out of the ordinance that said maximum, but that didn't make a difference. We were still at our top, we couldn't go any higher. If we would have voted for something, and it was under the guise of hiring 10 police officers, which we couldn't use that money for, the city would have been doing something illegal, and I will not do anything that's illegal. That's why research is important. I mean, even as far as sending the taxing ordinances to the solicitor to bring him up to speed. I'm willing to help anybody out that wants information. I'm a teacher.
Okay, same question, Nikarol.
I believe it is necessary to, you know, to raise taxes or to balance out our budget, I would definitely go for it, but I believe that we should stop creating fees out of, you know, for every little thing that they want to implement, like now when people, when they're gonna move, they have to create a fee for that. And I believe that we have to stop creating so many fees and putting so many burden on the taxpayer, because these people, the residents of our city, do not get a raise in their jobs every time they create a new fee, you know, for, to balance out our budget. I think that we should cut them in spending instead of creating so many fees to balance out our budget.
Thank you. And the next question will be from Gary to Jean.
Jean, I want to ask you the question that I asked the Republican candidates a few moments ago. Do you believe Act 47 was the right move for the city of Hazelton?
Initially, I supported it because of the fact we needed oversight. There's no question about it. The city had gone running amok with the spending, it was totally out of control, and everything which Nikarol just said was establishing, raising taxes and fees. Our citizens have reached their limit, they can't afford it anymore. And that being said, I was hopeful that Act 47 would have a good handle on our expenditures and what was going on. So far, they have tried to implement it as best they can, but then again, the mayor runs the city, and I'm not cutting anybody up, and the final decision is his. This is what we were told by Pell. So all we can do is try to work with him and try to express our ideas and our thoughts as far as different revenue sources to bring in money into the city so that we can avoid tax increases. Act 47 has its pluses, it also has its minuses.
Okay, Nikarol.
I'm agree with Jean Mop. I think that Act 47 has some positive, it has some negative. Like, for example, we allow to increase the EIT tax to get more revenues to the city. It also allow us to get more grants, federal grants and state grants to revenue to the city, but at the same time, it kind of increase, increasing taxes to the taxpayer, like I just said before, we putting more burden to the taxpayer when they didn't have, when it was not their fault, you know, the city falling into bankruptcy or...
Perseverance.
Yeah, so I don't believe that we should put all the burden on the city, on the city residents, so it has some positive, it has some negative, so...
Okay, and Jack.
Well, I think Act 47 is a tool to get the cities back on a firm financial footing. I originally didn't vote for it. The mayor, as a matter of fact, got the ball rolling for Act 47. He wanted to be, go early intervention. I agreed with them, and myself and Bobby Gavio tried to vote it for it, but unfortunately didn't go through, but that's okay. I think Act 47 will help the city get back on a firm financial footing. I think there, like Jeanie said, there are some pluses and minuses. I mean, there's some things you can and cannot do. It puts everybody on alert that, you know, we're in financial distress. I mean, that's a message to the unions too, that, you know, maybe they can't get as much money as they always wanted to in the past because of our status, but I think it's a good tool, and it's worked elsewhere. Wicksborough wanted to go into it, and the state refused. I mean, one of the things is, we got an $850,000 loan, interest-free, and that's what the mayor wanted.
All right, to Pete. Pete, you said earlier, we have to come up with ideas. So tell me, what is the number-one idea that you have?
Well, I know a little bit about the garbage, and I don't know the law on the garbage, but I would think, look to see if the city could take the garbage over again. It's making money now, it's making lots of money, and, you know, keep the, why not, we're working with the Water Authority all the time, they could still do the billing, and the city could receive the funding. Now, I don't know how, that could only go into certain areas, but maybe it could help with roads, or I don't know. with roads, or I don't know, you know, I don't know how that, how that works. I wouldn't, you know, I'm, I'd have to check with the solicitor or the city administrator. But I, to me, I would like to look into that, because I think, I think that would be a good idea, you know.
Okay. And Victor, what's the number-one idea that you have?
Well, I think that, first of all, the roads are a problem. That's my idea. And I will work with the mayor and the DPD foreman to find the best solution and use the liquid fuel money, not only to pay a new equipment, but also to do the necessary to street repairs. And at the same time, I'm against selling any city assets due to that money will be only to one-time fixed.
Sorry, sorry, guys, you're being picked up on the mic. Keep going, Victor.
And when it's gone, and the money's gone, it's gone. Like, you know, airport, water and sewer authority. I think that the best way is to investigate and search for the way that our city residents request and need.
Lauren, same question.
I have a little bit of a two-part answer to this one, that I think goes hand-in-hand together. First, when I look around the city, I feel the city's pretty full. There's not really much room to move around, living-wise and business-wise. So if you're coming into town and you'd like to open up a new business, I believe that we should be there to support them, and there should be information providing them, step one, step two, step three, with full support from the time they enter, all the way up until your business license is handed over. And then, hand-in-hand with that, support the code enforcement department and beef that up a little bit with staff and the tools to do the job, to then turn around and support who's coming here and opening up a business and choosing to raise a family and make a good life for themselves.
Thank you. Gary to Jack.
Jack, do you, or, let me start that again. Council's role in Hazelton's government is to create ordinances and laws and work hand-in-hand with the mayor to see them through. Can you give me an example of what you would like to see pass if you're re-elected back to City Council?
Well, I think the mayor and council should work hand-in-hand. And our job as council is to oversee the budget, and that, one of our main jobs is the budget, and to oversee the budget and make sure that the, that the right amount of money is taken in and spent. And I think over the past couple of years, that has not, the mayors have not adhered to that. I'd say the last two mayors, they've spent what they wanted to spend and hired who they wanted to hire. The last mayor, I'll give you an example. He went out and got signs, snowband signs. All he had to do was send us a copy of it, or a template, and we would have told them, we'd have given our input. He went out and got them without us looking at them, and they didn't match the ordinance. We had to change the ordinance, which we voted to change, to match the signs. So the mayor needs to work more with council and realize that, you know, that our job is more than just legislative. We're watchdogs for the citizens of Hazelton.
Okay, Nick Carroll.
Sure. Council's role in Hazelton's government is to create ordinances and laws. Can you give me one example you would like to see pass if you're elected?
Well, something, something like new from, okay. So something that I would like to implement would be, as I've been, you know, doing a lot of door knocks, I asked the residents what their number-one concern is, and everybody has given me the same answer, and it is the potholes. So I would like to see the implementation of a program called pavement system management, which would apply for a grant to get the software and to get money into the city that would be dedicated more towards our street department to fix the, so many potholes that we have in our city. So what this program would do, would be, we would, it would monitor the condition of the street by inputting data, obviously. And then, when payment system would come, the payment system would come, then would, the system would tell us what to do, why streets would go first, and then in that order.
Okay. Jean.
We have a vacant property ordinance, and it hasn't been implemented as well as it should be. But one of the things that I would like to have as an addition to it, which would bring income in and also would address the blight. Banks hold a lot of mortgages. They've, people have lost their homes unfortunately. And because they are the landlords, they still are responsible for the maintenance of a building. And they don't seem to be following through, whether it's cutting the grass, fixing the roof, they're in charge. For instance, the Altamont, okay, now we have it all boarded up and fences around it, but it needs to be repaired. And actually, with code and some of our problems, and it would also help us to bring money into the city, should they ignore it.
Okay. Lauren, there have been times in which the dynamic between the mayor and council has been nothing short of romper-room, outbursts and stonewalling, and just a general lack of productivity. What guarantees the public that you can and will work with the mayor's office regardless of who is mayor?
There's a, that's a tough way to answer. I'm open to working with anybody. I'm not looking to come in there and be a tyrant and take over, and it's my way or the highway. I believe collectively as a unit, that's what makes the world go around if you think it's black and I think it's white. And I think that that would be a good combination of people to come together open-mindedly to support whoever the current administration is, or the new administration to take over in hand, and work hand-in-hand to make the best decision to bring Hazelton forward as a community, and to bring Hazelton full circle to be back to the place that everybody once says that Hazelton was.
Okay, Pete.
Yeah, it's, that's a tough question, because you want to work with the mayor. But if you're, if you're dead-set on doing something that you don't believe in, it's really hard to accept that. And you have to find a median. And that's where, I just follow the news and follow the meetings, and it just seems like they can never do this. It's like, I don't like this guy, and we're not gonna vote with him. If you see the voting, if you went through the voting by council in the past, it's like two people vote the same for this all the time, and two people vote the same. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You go check back and you'll see it. Well, you can't run the city that way. You have to have, you have to have a different view once in a while. You can't, if she wins as the council, the two of us can't vote the same all the time. That's not human. We're not human. You have to, you have to find a median with whoever the mayor is. And hopefully, they'll take, you know, four or five suggestions and bring it to one, instead of just one.
And Victor.
I think the council should work with the mayor. No matter who is the mayor, no matter who party is the member of the council, or what party is the mayor that is in turn. But we need to find a way to be, agree with the best proposal for the people that live in Hazelton. Because sometimes, it's like, the mayor proposed something and the city council didn't agree. They had to, we had to find a way, as a city council, how we're gonna work together? How are we gonna work together and find a way that is the best for the community, and is the best for all the people that live in Hazelton? Because if we not agree to pass any, any law or whatever it is, it's not the way, it's not the right way, because we need to work together and find the best.
Rover.
Well, the ordinance that are in place, the co-ordinance that are in place, I mean, not throw, throw the book away, but something that I believe that we must do is to public the co-ordinances to, so everyone could have access to this book. I mean, if they are in place, it's because the previous city council member, they thought that, you know, it was necessary at the time. So I believe that is, if they are there, it's because they are necessary. But I believe that, like I said, that they must be publicized on our website so everybody can have access and they can get to know what they are.
Okay, Jean.
We have to follow the UCC codes for the code department. That's a mandate. But that being said, ordinances that are passed referring to code, sometimes they're put in place as moneymakers, not by council, but because it's been initiated by the administration. We have to be fair with our code ordinances. I agree with Nick Carroll. A long time ago, when I first got on council, I was asking the newspaper if they would publish them periodically, like seasonal, so that it keeps people abreast of what's up-to-date in snow season, summertime, what to expect in the spring for street cleaning and things like that. And most of the new code ordinances that have been put in place have a reason, so, but some of them are really old, okay, and they've been amended. And we can't throw those out, because the reason is, we can amend them, but we need to be able to refer back to them to see how they were established and the reasons they were established in the beginning.
Okay. And Jack.
Well, we could throw out the code book, and we'd have anarchy, but I don't think anyone would want that. It'd be too much fun. But, you know, I think the codes can be a burden on businesses. I had a friend of mine, Lex Sleuth, his, one of his person came up to him and was, wanted to open a business, a daycare. They went to the city, and the city said, oh, it's this, this. Took, it would take six months to eight months. How long? He went to Hazel Township, he was open up in two weeks. So we need to maybe streamline our code book and streamline some of our regulations to make our city business-friendly, to attract businesses here and keep them here. And I think, and it could be done. You hear that all the time, that our ordinances and our, what a business has to go through, the hoops, they go to Hazel Township and they open up in such a short time, and they don't have the mercantile tax, which is a burden on our tax, on the businesses, which I think we, down the line, should do something about. Thank you.
Victor, our city budget, if you could take money out of one area of the city budget, what would you reduce and where would you put the money towards? If you could shift money around, what are the two things that you would be most eager to shift?
Okay, I think that's, that's a very tough question, too. Because I think that the first thing that I should do is investigate and do the search, was the, was the right way to do that? Because you need to analyze first, where you're gonna take the money from, where you're gonna move, what's the necessity for the city, what's the priority that we have? Because I don't say, right now, I can't say right now, how are I gonna move the money? Where are I gonna put the money? But the thing is, I would do research and investigate and ask people at the community what's the right way, what's the necessity that we have. And then, we decide with all the city council, the best way to do that.
Okay. And Pete.
Same question?
Yes.
Well, first of all, we'd have to have money, and we don't have it. So it's pretty hard to move the money around when most of the departments and all, everybody are struggling. So, like he said, you'd have to do a study and see if there is money to move. I don't see it happening now. Maybe in the future, you know, that could happen. But you'd have to, you'd have to have a study and see just if there's money there to move. I mean, that's the whole idea of what we're going through now, in trying to, trying to get money in these different departments, the police department. You can't take money out of the police department, because they're the most important part of our city, I believe, at this time. You know, they, they have to keep the people safe, and I think they're doing a good job of that. And the same thing with the city workers. They're all good, hard workers. I mean, I think they did a great job in the winter this year. I really commend them on that. I think people should do it more. But I don't, moving money from them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch it.
Okay. And Lauren.
I'll be honest, that's a hard question, and I'm gonna piggyback off both these gentlemen here and say, I really feel strongly in the same way. I'm not knowledgeable enough about it yet at this point to be able to make an educated decision, to tell you, we're gonna pull from here to place there. Right now, the playing field's pretty level, and maybe the way to stay to go, or stay the way that we are for the moment. And working hand-in-hand with Act 47, they have a good plan put into place to help guide us as to how those decisions would be made. But I do not know enough, to be very honest, at this time, to be able to make an educated decision on that.
Okay. Because of our time, what we're going to do is, Gary's gonna ask the final question, and we're gonna go straight down the line, and you're all gonna answer.
And this is a great one, because I, and this one I really thought of, and I thought this would be a great way, because I want to hear your thoughts, all six of you. Do you think the next city council, the next five members who will serve starting in January, do you think they need to do some team-building workshops? Do you think they need to spend some time together? And do you think they, as a group, need to go out into the community and volunteer so they, so the residents can see council working together? And I'll start with Jack.
Well, you know, I think it's important for council and the mayor to work together. When Mayor Barletta was in office for two terms, I worked with him on many things. He had some great ideas. We moved the city forward. I was with him all the way, even though he was of a different party. I voted with him most of the time. One thing I disagreed with him, and I was the only one on council, was when he wanted to sell the Water Authority. We came up with a solution, the master services agreement, which brought in $450,000 a year, brought in maybe eight or eight million so far. That would have been a burden on the taxpayers. So, you know, I think it's important to work together, but you can't always have that. And you want to work together if, but when the mayor comes up and says he wants to raise taxes 86%, you want me to go along with that and play nice, Pete, like in a sandbox? I fought against that one raise that one of the mayors wanted. They got it down to 56%. I voted against it, but 86%, I said you're gonna chase everyone out of the city. We just can't keep them raising taxes on people.
All right. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump over, and I'm gonna go to Pete for the, to answer that question.
Let me get my, what was that question?
So, team-building, do you think the next city...
Oh, yes, yes, okay. Team-building, very important. I experienced classes on that. I actually went, when our company was run by American Management Company, they sent us. It's very important, and that would be a good idea to, if the council members would be willing to go to team-building. It's a, it's a great idea. And that's what the city needs. I, you know, I'm in sports my whole life, and you could relate team to everything. Team wins. Team. One person doesn't win. Team wins. And that's a very good question, and I believe in it. I believe we should also get out there, well, I'm out there anyway, I love to go around the city. I check things out all the time, and it wouldn't be just a natural thing for me. I just think it's a good idea, and I actually believe most of the, most of the people here would probably be in agreement with that. If we, after Lauren, we'd have to, we might have to put her in a cart, but...
All right. Thank you. Jean, I'm gonna go to you.
Okay. I believe it's been a fallacy that's been perpetrated, that council can't get along. Trust me, if you would see us in the back room before the meeting, we're all good friends, all right? We get along well. I believe in teamwork, there's no question about it. I'm willing to help anybody on council, whether it's a newcomer or brainstorm with a council member that's been there maybe for two years only, and help them out and give them the knowledge that I have. I would like to be able to pass my experience and my knowledge on to the new council members as they come along. I've always felt that the city was one of the most important things, and it was, the residents, they're the heartbeat of the city. And we need to get together and work together, and I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the administration either. Jeff and I started out as great friends, and unfortunately, sometimes he neglected us and threw us to the wayside. And I wish we could get back on board the way we were.
Okay. Lauren.
I think team-building is a very important factor, not only on decision-making, but making everything a level play, a level playing field. I do not accomplish what I accomplish in a day as a one-mount operation. We grew up playing sports, and my brother is a very big... We grew up playing sports, and my brother is a very big LeBron James fan, and when you look at that team, that entire team knows, is that man going right, left, or slam dunking it? And I think it's important to know who you sit with and understand that person inside and out. And you may think it's black, and I may think it's white, but at the end of the day, come to the best decision for what is best for the city of Hazleton. And I think it's, also, it involves the residents of our community. There needs to be a sense of pride that comes back into this community, and everybody should be working together, for whatever reason and purpose that you have here.
Okay. Thank you. Nick Carroll.
Yes. I'm agreeing with Lauren. I believe that council, it is actually a team, and they are, they have a common denominator, and that's the best interest of the residents of the city. So I think they have to, we have to, you know, they have to work, and if we get elected, we have to work together as a team for the best interest of the residents of the city.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, Victor.
I think that teamwork is the best thing, is the best thing to work together. First of all, one more important thing that we have to do is, listen to the people. Listen to the people first, and then listen to the opinion, what they think, that before we pass any law or code to the city, listen what the people need, what's the most important. And then, as a city council, we work together and look for the priority all the city needs or for all the residents, and do the best for all the community. That's the most important thing. Because as a city council, we only, is the voice for the people. We're not the people. We listen to people and decide what's the best, what's the priority, what they need, and then we can decide, working together as a team with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
And I'm so glad you brought up team-building, because I'm just going to throw something out right now, since I have all these people running for office, and since we have all of Hazleton watching. May is Military Appreciation Month, and it is also Memorial Day. And every May for the last several years, my husband, who is a combat veteran, and I have been placing the flags at Vine Street Cemetery. We are going to be doing so again this Saturday, May 18, at 10:00 a.m., and everybody who has participated here, you are welcome. Everybody in the community is welcome. Bring your kids. That cemetery's phenomenal. It's historic, and it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to come together, to have community pride, and all of the fabulous heroes and people that built this community who are buried there. So please, again, on Saturday, May 18, 10:00 a.m., everybody's welcome. Bring the kids, and we'll put all those flags in. Hundreds of flags need to be placed. Okay. With that said, we're going to go to closing statements, and each of you is going to have 30 seconds to close. Victor, we will start with you.
Well, that's what you say is very important. As a military, I got a military experience. I serve my country, thanks God. I say thank you to all the people who serve this country, too. And it's very important, and remember, this vote is for the people and for the people. Think who you're going to vote for. We need people to be able to work with the community. That's all we need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lauren.
I'd like to thank you for having us all here tonight, because I think this helps the community get a little bit more of an in-depth experience as to who we are as a person, and our experiences, a little bit of our background. And I look forward to, on May 21 of next week, that you step out, and this helps you make an educated, formal decision, and wherever the cards may fall, that the city ends up in a good position, and we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Pete.
Same here. I want to thank the opportunity for coming here, and I just want everybody to know that I am for the people. I, you know, I've always been that way. I'm a people person, and I love this city. I stayed here, I, you know, had an opportunity to leave and decided I wasn't going to do that. So I believe I could help. I don't, I'm a newcomer. I don't owe anything to anybody. I don't, I didn't get any favors. I don't owe any favors. So I really believe I could help, and that, and, you know, it's for the people.
Okay. Nick Carroll.
Well, I believe that it is time for us to move the city forward. I believe that it is time for us to come together as one city and move the city, again, move the city forward. And we need, we need you, the voters, to come out and vote on May 21. Take my name in consideration when you go out to vote. I'm number two on the ballot, Nick Carroll Soto.
I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity, and I would like to thank the public for putting their faith in me for the last two terms. I've done my very best for you, and I will continue to do so if you choose to re-elect me again. The May 21 is our election. I am number one on the ballot, so I'd appreciate your vote, and if you're Republican, you could write me in. But that being said, the people, and our children especially, that are leaving the city to go elsewhere for jobs, we need to keep them here. We need to retool and bring the education back towards bringing the kids here for work.
Jack.
Once again, thank you to Gary and Tiffany in WYLN for this forum. It's been enlightening. I think it helps voters make a decision. I'm running for council to bring another voice of reason to city council. Along with Jean and other council members, I will help move the city forward if I'm elected. You know, in my past years, we've always tried to think out of the box and just not hit people over the head with increasing taxes. We, you know, we, my last term in office, we voted to get scales to try and bring some revenue to the city, and I'll bring different ideas to the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for participating. Thank you for stepping up and your willingness to serve. We appreciate it. And Gary, I have to say, this has been really fun couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had, we've been the only local station to offer two live mayoral debates, Democrats and Republicans, the only local station to offer a live city council forum, and we have a meet the candidates for Hazelton Area School Board special coming up on May 16. We're really excited about. And of course, we have our live election coverage on May 21.
We do. So, May 21, 8 to 10, you can join us right here on WYLN. We will have the numbers, we will have the interviews, we have a powerhouse round table, if you will, well, maybe L-shaped table, of great people who know Hazelton inside and out, and the greater Hazelton area. So again, when you want the facts, you want to know what's going on, and you went down the middle reporting. It's WYLN TV's place to go. And again, tonight, our thanks to the Gans family for allowing us to do this. Tiffany and I, we brainstorm, but they give us the opportunity to do this every year.
And our great production crew.
Wonderful production crew for helping us put this on each and every year. Again, thank you, and as I'm stealing from Tiffany, you don't like what you see? Go out and do something about it. Vote on May 21 for the candidate that represents you and your ideas the best. Again, thank you for joining us, once again, here on WYLN TV. We hope you have a great night, and hope you get out to vote on May 21 for your municipal elections. Good night.
You're watching WYLN TV, where your local network.